Well, good afternoon. Welcome to the Commissioner's conference session of Monday, May 10. The meeting is being recorded, as he said, the meeting is part of our public record. No cause for public hearing, and there's no little items of discussion I'm aware of. There's only one new item of discussion, and that is transit authority. So, we're going to venue for presentation.
Okay. I want to thank you for allowing me to come here and try to get through this already. So I did give you each packet that shows our ridership, our fares that we've collected, and that's just the fiscal year that we're in now. So you'll be able to see those figures that we've got so far. I'd like to say that the Warren County Transit Authority was formed in 19678 by the Warren County Commissioners at the behest of the State of Pennsylvania. The first pro- yes?
I was just gonna say, prior to the presentation, would you just take a moment and talk about your reasons for being here, just generally?
Okay.
Just to some background, because, first thing is, is this isn't something that's been done in a while, that we've had the Transit Authority here.
Years.
Yeah. And when we passed the increase in the county M.A., afterwards, we had a there was a Transit Authority meeting, we had a discussion about having Wendy and everybody come and do a presentation in order to kind of go over the thing that the Transit Authority does. So that's kind of what this meeting is, is to give Wendy, who's the executive director, that's her official title, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I got that right, to kind of run through everything the Transit Authority does, and then give you guys an opportunity to ask questions and kind of go over the.
Okay. So ultimately, we'll grab the question of the municipalities and the county, and how that works?
Yes.
To help understand that.
Good. Okay, so, can you, the first program was the fixed route that runs on a fixed schedule. This program is structured to be funded with federal, state, and county government funds. It is not structured for funding by townships or other local entities. When the State of Pennsylvania structured and appropriated funds for statewide public transportation, they chose the counties to provide administration program oversight and county co-funding of the fixed route service. Most counties have established authorities to fulfill their transit responsibility. PENDOT awards Section 1513 operating assistance funds based on the number of passengers utilizing the routes and mileage reported. After Section 1513 funds are awarded, PENDOT informs TAWK of the amount of local match funds required annually. Per PENDOT regulations, local match funds can only come from local municipalities. When TAWK was formed, all local match funds were provided by the county until a recent Board of Commissioners, for unknown reasons, was only willing to provide $5,000. At that time, the past Executive Director of TAWK reached out to local municipalities that run the fixed route to help supplement the shortfall from the county.
So the match at that point, that's going to be the bank over?
Yes.
So, at that time, how much was the county contributing to create the pack?
Well, the other thing is, is the, the, I can't remember what we used to call it, agreement between us or agency on age, I guess.
Through the three-way agreement, yeah.
Yeah. They're kind of.
Remember that, right?
That, that did not previously, technically, need a county match.
Right, so let's set that aside.
Yeah, and, and that was the part that was determined to be unlawful because of the issue that the match can only be provided by local municipalities.
Right.
And it's our understanding that in statewide, that means the county.
So, because we were able to do the other municipalities, this preventative crisis in which the TAWK building would have reverted back to the federal government and Experience Incorporated would have lost their nutrition site and service center. So that's how the fixed route is funded. Do you have any questions off that?
Yes, so, what was the contribution, let's say, in 2008 when the county had done?
Yes, we would have to have the records to look at that, because the state has changed their match requirement.
Oh.
And they're now on a, four or five years ago, they changed it. And they now have an increasing step system, where this year it's such a percent, next year it's such a percent.
Yeah, it goes up 5% each year until we meet 15%.
Oh, okay. For how many years? Or how many years will we need of that?
Uh, we're, we still have, I believe, five years ago.
Okay. All right, well, anyway, maybe proportionally might be a better way, like, did they, did the previous Board Commissioners slash it from 20,000 to five, or 10 to five, or 50 to five?
Well, no, I mean, that's where the, the through-way agreement kind of messes with that, because some portion of that was being paid by the, you can see on.
But that was only after the Commissioners was through.
I know, that's what I mean, though, is, my point is, is to try to come up with the exact figure, is we'd have to go through those records.
What do you think?
That was about 10,000.
It was about 10,000.
So let's say roughly it was 15,000, if.
But, but what you're saying is, the expectation going forward is that
The county will.
Some, well, 15% of your budget is going to need to be funded locally.
Right, it's 15% of the fixed route budget.
Yeah, just the fixed route. It's not, the other two don't have anything to do with the county local match. And as of right now, I'm still able to get some funding from the municipalities. I'm not saying that, that's not unlawful, we can do that, and as long as they're willing to still put up, you know, put out the money that they are, and the city also does, they actually give us 7,500. So as long as they continue to do that, you know, your match won't go up a lot, but it will go up each year.
So, we, the local municipalities of the county, or some non-federal portion, is to make up 15% of the fixed route budget?
Right.
And what is the fixed route budget annually?
Well, we actually, it's actually a percentage of what the state gives us.
Okay.
And, I wish I brought that money, but I'm not with me.
Because there's also what, the fares and the other stuff that go into that?
That helps, yeah, supplement, right. The state, I think this year is giving us, I don't remember if you remember, that letter that we got.
I was just curious, because.
255,000, I didn't remember. So it's 15% of that is what we have to get locally.
For the current fiscal year.
For the current fiscal year, yeah.
How important is the fixed route to enable the shared ride program?
I don't want to downplay the fixed route, but we could keep the shared ride. But, I believe that the fixed route is needed for some of our clients. I mean, we do, I also gave you in the back of that pamphlet, is, we have to do a survey every three years, we should have had it, it's all the way in the back.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. We should have had a survey last year, but due to the virus, we were unable to perform one. But we have to survey our passengers, and if you get to the very last, you're going to get some bad reports on a driver that I did fire, but you'll see that the passengers, they, they rely on us, they do need us. Obviously, the population's going down, so that is affecting us. But there are the clients that, you know, aren't able to drive, don't have a license for a DUI or whatever, but they still need to get to work. We do transport from the county jail, we do transport some of their inmates to their jobs so that they can continue working. And then, you know, so, it is a need of service.
The fixed route can be operated, can be subtracted from the shared ride service, which is primarily a senior service, and medical assistance service, which is a state mandated. But, the building is connected to the fixed route. So if you choose to cancel the fixed route, you will lose the building.
Got it.
Fixed route is, this is showing 65% of the. I guess, my point, which was an off-the-cuff comment in that budget meeting, about the other communities not using, utilizing the fixed route, really, for factory, your own, your handout here says, the 55% of the home zip codes of 16365, or 16436, for instance, has maybe none or 1%. So, I guess I'm, if you're saying that the county is ultimately the entity that is responsible for it, and that's helpful information, something I didn't know. At the same time, I feel the inequity of, you know, the rural communities kind of helping to carry the burden of what is ultimately, City of Warren, Pleasant, maybe some Glade, Conawong, or certainly, et cetera, being the bulk of the users.
Right, you are correct.
I don't know how to do that, but.
Yeah.
Well, Forest County doesn't have a fixed route service. They don't have the population to justify the service. And Potter County probably wouldn't. They chose to join a joiner. However, the state very kindly did an efficiency, an economy and efficiency survey statewide. And it was illuminating that the joiners are not economically efficient. And by going into a joiner, the county actually would be increasing their funding, just by the way it has happened. They tend to expand staff and the, perhaps, the lack of local knowledge, because it's centralized dispatching. It, it just, they end up hiring more staff, and the cost per service goes up. And Warren County was among the most efficient services in the state.
The funny thing is, I remember having a conversation with you about five or six years ago now, where at the time, there was subregionalization happening somewhere to the, ourselves, maybe Rock curb and. Yeah, and that was exactly what you said was going to happen. Well, did you want to walk us through the rest of this?
Sure. So, the shared ride program was initiated at the state level for seniors 865 plus. The shared ride service for seniors is funded, 85% lottery funds, approximately 14% from Experience Incorporated, and the remainder by the seniors' co-pay. This program is also open to the general public, but the general public must pay the full fare. And there is no county local match for the service.
Now, what would the fare, when you say full fare, do you have fares somewhere in here?
Uh, I do not have a fare. I do have one here. And this is, you know, obviously, set up with the help of the state. We do mileage. So it's depending on the mileage, how much it is, but it starts at $20 and it goes up to $26. We, we actually, you know, of course, obviously, these numbers are hard to look at because of the virus. Obviously, our service was, we were still running, but it was down quite a bit. But we actually take general public to Erie, you know, whether they want to go shopping, or, and they're willing to pay that $26. A lot will catch an airplane, go to the Greyhound bus, whatever. So the general public uses it, just not so much around county, they're more, I have to use the fixed route, as opposed to this, but the opportunity is there. Is there any more questions on the shared ride? I can tell you that, if you, because I know you don't, no, you haven't dealt with it, I didn't know until I went to work for the place, what all they did. But, the shared ride has, they have to schedule their ride. They're not allowed to do same-day service, that's as per the state. So they have to be scheduled at least a day in advance. We can schedule the two weeks, and they can go anywhere. They can go shopping, hair appointments, stockers appointments. I have, do have the list in there, anywhere they want to go, basically. With in Warren County, we do offer the service to Erie twice a week, and we started going to Jamestown twice a week. That one hasn't been used real well, but Erie was really good until this last year, so.
And Jamestown was added last because there was an insurance issue about the vehicles leaving the state.
Yes.
And that was quite a long negotiation and research and development project to get it so that we, we do go into Jamestown, right? We even proposed meeting a Chicago County bus at the state line. We were really trying to.
That's impressive.
Well, and the, the Jamestown thing got authorized, whereas COVID did, so.
Yes.
You know, that's, it's also really been able to take off.
And something else that we did, we actually did a lot more back when there were more nutrition sites throughout the county. We do nightly, we'll do a night run for the different areas, and they'll go out to dinner or something, just once a month, just to get outs and do something different. Maybe they're not able to drive, so they want to do something like that. And we still are doing that, in fact, just, a couple of the areas have started back up again now that they're able to go out and go to a restaurant or something. So that's starting to pick us back up again a little bit.
So with the shared ride, do you use buses for that?
Yes, the little white ones that you see running around town? That's what it is. And they go anywhere in the county.
Okay. Those are little white buses?
Yep.
Medical, medical assistance is funded by a combination of reimbursement. The state has authorized a grand total of 12 cents a mile, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
For family members or friends who are willing to transport a medical assistance person to an appointment. So it perhaps covers part of their gas.
Yeah.
The car, the tires, and the wear and tear is a donation. So it's not, it's not a great change for anybody. We also have some vehicles, what are we running now for medical assistance? Many, yes. Do we buy them new, or are they still used vehicles? I'll turn around now. Okay, we ran used vehicles for a long time, but, so, it's, it's economically run.
And that program is all funded by the Department of, the State Department of Human Services. And it's a pass-through to, from you guys to us. We're your vendor. We were set up to run the medical assistance program for the county. And so all that money is just all Department of Human Services funds.
Do any counties not have a shared ride, or, I'm not sure, a fixed route program?
Potter, Potter does.
Forest County does not.
Forest County.
Of Forest, right, you talked about them.
Yeah.
But all the others do?
Right.
I saw that it was used 41,000 times last year?
This, current year that we're in right now, yes. We're fiscal.
Last, oh.
So, yeah.
So you're June 30th here, eh?
Yes.
The pie chart that shows the directions on the fixed route is misleading, and it's labeled, it's labeled by the terminals. Where it says the Sheffield, that's not Sheffield Riders. The Sheffield is the terminal, the last stop on the route.
Right.
So those are side riders.
Right.
And the Youngsville are west-side Warren Riders Riders.
Yeah, so they hit Clairedun and Mead.
They, they do hit those, but the main riders.
So you're even picking up the Southside Warren in that Sheffield group, right?
Right.
Surprisingly even.
Well, those, those routes are pretty similar in their length, and they get the same, similar population centers.
Right.
I believe we also were transporting people who lived in the urban land, right?
We were, until they shut down.
I know, so I mean, that's another loss.
That's, yeah, that's a loss for us.
Right.
Has there ever been a conversation about expanding the fixed route to hit, like, to, to go further than it does in different directions?
A little. We'd have to do studies to see how many riders we'd be able to pick up. Actually had contact from somebody that lives up from the top of Mohawk at the trailer park, possibly going up there. I know at one time, it was just before I started, that they were doing the trailer park on Jackson Run, Mason's Mobile City. They had requests for it, so they did the study, thought it would work, and they didn't get the passengers update. Nobody ended up utilizing it, so that was taken back out again.
I think with local control, these kind of route changes can be done. A request can come in, we can look at it, we can do it. We don't have 20 dozen layers of permissions here.
Well, I was thinking, to Ben's point about, you know, the northwest corner, you know, the northern tier, of, you know, maybe having something that's just, kind of very oil, that'd be less cumbersome, but being able to accommodate those.
We could always do, which I kind of, I've actually been thinking about, but I haven't pursued it yet, is to do maybe twice a day or something, look like Pittsfield or Russell, and some people will be out there at this time, you know, bring it back into Warren, especially those that are working, you know, your average work span.
Yeah.
Something like that, not do it all day like we do around Warren, Youngsville, Sheffield, but maybe hit those areas at certain times of the day, and then, you know, to help bring in more riders.
And then the fixed route ridership program, is there a, I see that the portion, a certain percentage of people are paying for that? Is there a fare for that?
Yeah, the ridership, for a regular passenger is a dollar.
Okay.
If they're, I forget their ages. They're under five, they're free.
Do you dictate that, or does that come from the state?
It was set up years ago.
Okay.
I believe it's local, local decision, I suppose.
Yeah.
Because technically, the organizations can set the fares, and then, to basically pass a resolution rate, and then that's what's fed to PENDOT.
Right. Yeah.
And that money goes where?
That goes towards our operational spot.
Yeah, and basically, the, the way it's settled by PENDOT is, is any money they make goes to offset PENDOT's contribution. It doesn't offset the match, that's.
Yeah, that's that, ooh, state pays last. Yeah, that's, that's our program.
When we first got on the board, one of the things that I suggested is, is like, we really need to rev up the advertising program, because of the banners on the sides of the buses and a lot of the other stuff, and it's like, whoa, that money just goes to offset PENDOT's contribution.
Yeah.
You know, which, you know.
Years ago, when people were more altruistic, they would be wanting to know if they could contribute to other kinds of county programs. And I explained to them that it would be much better if they could structure their donation in some other way, simply because it would not increase the budget, it would decrease the state share.
Exactly. I know one question that I've had raised before was the size of the vehicles compared to the ridership on fixed route. That, that's something we don't have local control of, correct?
We do. We could choose a smaller bus. But there are times, and especially summertime, when we actually, you don't always see it, but the buses are full. We do, we work with Jefferson de Vries, and we'll take them, those kids to Sheffield Playground. We take them, I know we used to take them down to Perkins when they were open and they could do a tour and that. At those times, those buses are actually full. We don't have room for, somehow we have to turn away some of our actual passengers to get the kids to these programs. And we've also brought out another bus to help do that. So, I guess it's 50/50. You know, do we cut back our buses and go to a smaller one, and run into the fact that maybe we're going to run into a problem with not having enough space, or continue operating these buses?
I think that there are technological advances to some of the big buses, too, in terms of reduced pollution, more electronic controls, more efficient engines. So you're dealing with higher state of technology. If you go back to the other buses, you're increasing the emissions and all that.
So are your, all your big buses are fueled by natural gas, correct?
No.
No, they're not.
We're diesel.
Diesel.
Yeah. We were to get a station, but the county wouldn't give us, or sell us the property, because it has to be by our building.
The city.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I missed it. The, the, the station had to be right beside our building, or right in our property. And the city decided they didn't want to sell us or give us the property.
They had their own schemes.
Yeah.
Well, the.
So, Sanji Station. Sanji Station went away for us.
And part of the thing was, was the way PENDOT had devised the, what, the program, or the program was devised, because they wanted it to be right next to the station. Nobody ever understood why it couldn't be on Route 6. They also kind of mandated that it had to be government vehicles that it would utilize, that they didn't want to open it to a larger group, which just made no sense to me, because it's like, you're trying to encourage people to use natural gas in these engines.
Right.
If nobody else can use the facility, how, it just made no sense, so, you know.
They were willing to spend millions.
Yeah.
It was willing to spend.
Well, they did. Now they're, this, the, you know, the Cadda and.
Yeah, Crawford.
Crawford has at least a few, a couple of.
They have quite a few, Sanji.
They, yeah, they, by now, they probably do, yeah, because they were ordering them.
Right.
Yeah, it was kind of a bad design, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, some things you just can't justify. I mean, it's, it's like putting fur on a bird and forgetting the feathers. Why?
Let's go away for it.
Well, I mean, you, you know, with the government, for a period of time, you fly.
You're looking at them, right?
Well, she's had it worse than us.
Well, the state and feds are so many layers you remove from us, that you don't, you can't go and look at people and say, why, I mean, you know, maybe work this out. There's too many vested interests that are being satisfied, other than the client.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure. Do you know Lisa?
No. Lisa, hi, Kirk. I used to work at Young Car.
Yes.
Just from that perspective, it would, it might be a really good idea if you go and give your presentation to the municipalities that you impact, because while we receive your letters there and things, I don't recall that we've seen you at a meeting. I think it would be a good idea to let the supervisor, the liberal counsel, know what, what the impact is.
Okay. I think that's a really good idea.
So it was part of the conversation at the board meeting was, we're going to. So it was part of the conversation at the board meeting was, we're going to schedule meetings with Sheffield and go. Because, I mean, technically speaking with fixed route, I mean, really, it should be the responsibility and a large part of those municipalities to keep the program going. Because it's true, I mean, Ben's point is very relevant that, you know, they, you know, the idea that in Columbus, you're, you know, or.
Eldred and Southwest.
Eldred, Southwest, that you're subsidizing this program, it really isn't fair. Like, you know, and, and I think it's time to do that same thing that they did previously, kind of make that case to them.
Okay.
I know a lot of people use it in Young Forest.
Right, oh, yes, right.
And when that went, once in a while when you see a bus go by with no one on it, I think it would be really important for the council to know when they're actually using it.
Okay.
Yeah, well, this data was very helpful. I wouldn't have guessed it would utilize this much. And basically, I realized that one citizen probably uses it fifty times.
Right.
You know, essentially it comes out to one citizen per use per year, which is sizable. And our contribution was about a dollar per person per year.
Well, that's kind of the other point that I mentioned, is like, you're putting in, we're putting in ten to fifteen grand or a total extra for like thirty or forty at this point.
Yeah, it's forty now.
But it pulls down like, it's a lot more than a quarter to none, and it's, right, I mean, overall.
Yeah, he was talking about the, she was just saying the fixed route program.
Yeah, that's what I mean, is like the match fund that we put together, I mean, you could say, okay, well, we won't pay it, like the money that's utilized from the state is pretty substantial, so.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense. Unless they make the state change.
The other thing is, if the U.S. vote holds and the state can raise your percentage by stroke of the pen, but that same stroke of the pen, in refusal to meet it, they will cut the program back so that the match percentage is what they say it should be.
Still a percent, right?
Yeah.
Are we at the max contribution right now?
No, I think we have four more, four or five more, I'm just saying.
All right, I'm sorry, I didn't ask the question wrong.
Okay.
Just point, if we increase our contribution, would you be able to draw down more and do more?
No. No, no. Well, we don't get more money than our current budget calls for. So if we did some kind of a study or something or decided to increase services, we could request more money and then the match percentage would go up.
Okay.
But they wouldn't approve an increase in the budget without a service justification and they'd probably come in and look and see what we were doing, right?
Uh huh, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
They, it's a micro, it's a microscopic level supervision, actually, because of the whole thing being computerized. And so you have data points for, for everything, that's the utilization, our budget, what we spent on whatever. And they have a raft, which we were privileged to meet recently, of people with advanced degrees in this kind of thing. And they are able to pinpoint minor fluctuations and variations and ask for justification for it. Why is this, or what changed here? It's very much the Eagle High.
All of the buses and navigation systems are computerized and all the data goes into the systems, so. And that keeps some fair information, everything.
Big Brother, definitely Big Brother. And the T U has the gold rules of there money and they want to know what you're doing with it. And frankly, with all the corruption that you see, even though I'm unaware of any corruption locally, you know that it's operating in other places, and so it's kind of good that the thieves can't just run away with it, you know.
Anything else you wanted to say?
I don't have anything unless you have more questions.
Any other questions?
You have a question, how many employees do you have?
We have a total of twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah, we have four full-time office staff, one part-time. We have two maintenance garage employees full-time. We have a full-time cleaning person and a part-time cleaning person. And then we have, that puts us at, and they did this, thirteen full-time drivers and six part-time drivers. And six of those full-time drivers are our fixed route. We have two different drivers for each route per day except for Saturday.
Okay. And you say the building is owned by the feds, is that correct?
All of the money came from federal to.
Okay. We own the feds, but they keep strings on it. It used to be twenty-five years, is it still?
I don't know.
You cannot repurpose a building that the federal has been sponsoring for twenty-five years without their permission.
It's about that point right now, right?
No.
No.
The building we wanted in two thousand seven.
Oh, is that recent?
Uh huh.
It was during the downturn.
We were running out of the county warehouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, and where that.
And the state refused to spend ten cents more on that warehouse.
We didn't notice. Yeah, that was during the downturn and the stimulus money was utilized to redevelop the entire area. And it was part of this larger scheme to bring everybody to that one location, that's why the senior center moved there. Unfortunately, some of those concepts never really, probably pent up what people thought.
Built upon earmarks.
Yeah, earmarks.
Did you hear our back?
Senator Santorum.
Oh, I call it something else, but you're saying now.
Yeah, the city got earmarked too. They wanted to build a bridge across.
To nowhere, right?
A walking bridge over to the park.
Yeah.
A pedestrian bridge.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the architectural study that was done in preparation for this forgot about checking the controls on the river and assumed that the bridge could be built with piers in the water. And when it actually, the money came and they wanted to build the bridge, I don't know which commission it was, Fish and Game or Rivers or something. They said, no piers in the water, you've got to do a span over the whole thing. And that increased the cost from one million to many millions, and so the bridge could not be built.
There you go.
But it was, it was the choice, the choice of the architect that was made to draw those plans because perhaps if the plans had accurately reflected the cost, somebody somewhere might have approved the money and you might have got there.
That's another funny example.
Well, I do mention this because there was quite a bit of feeling at the time that it was yours truly and the rest of the transit board that stopped the bridge project so the funds could be repurposed for the building. Us, we didn't have anything to do with it at all.
Well, given a lot of the decisions at the time, like here, it's pretty safe.
Well, it's one of the few times that we've been hung with a judgment that we.
I've never heard that. I've never heard anything with you, that you guys had anything to do with anything.
Oh, we did.
That's interesting.
Yeah, and, I mean, we, we never lobbied for or against the bridge. I mean, what, did it have to do with us?
But originally, or I know Dan tried to pitch him on having the actual moving the Hickers Street Bridge down there, having to go straight to Route Six. I think that I've heard multiple reasons as to why that never even came about either. Part of it was the muscles and the river question, which always kind of can, I don't know, affect the camera. But anyway.
I have no other questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming.
Do you have some progress or some requirements that you would like to have come over? Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, thank you. All right, quick updates on policy procedures. Pam and I worked on some of this stuff last Thursday or so and practically, we'll have a series of them ready to go here in the very near future. But we're working on it. Project updates. I'll start with the EMS and fire. The county signed up with Crawford and Erie County, as you're aware, for a fire EMS study, which the DCEB has, has hired here consultants. The county at this point is convening and hosting them, getting them on the day they want and hosting a meeting with the Fire Services Committee on Wednesday in order to essentially find out from the fire chiefs what they would like to have a consultant's work on. We know that consolidations are not something that this community wants to hear and so we need to know what other options there are for, you know, keeping these fire departments stacked. So Wednesday would be an interesting evening if you wanted to pop in.
I saw that.
Uh, let's see.
It's six p.m., I mean.
Yep.
No dinner.
No dinner.
Just snacks.
There usually is dinner.
Always dinner. Like, that's a big emphasis on dinner. It's kind of when I got out, I was like, ah, okay. There is usually dinner, that's why.
Apparently there's money for staffing, right?
That's funny.
So anyway, between the policy procedure stuff and EMS, that's pretty much where my time's going this week. Any other project updates? You guys?
Just continuing to try to move a broadband task force or the broadband idea forward. So been spending some man-hours and speaking to constituents that are invested or have opinions and trying to put something together to come up with a plan there, so.
Really narrowed it on our themes this year.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, you know, I've always once heard that you can push a million things a mile or you can push one thing a million miles, and I think that's kind of the call, hopefully. So.
Um, we're moving along with the county website. I've got, you know, collected all the imagery and stuff, setting up meetings with Forest Marketing Services to do their branding and all of that. They're super excited about that. I'm gonna try to, one of the things that I'm gonna follow up with you guys to talk about is with the new site, going through and kind of again reviewing other county sites, we'd really like to have a visitor section that has like marketing information. We've always talked about doing like a visitor site, but I think there should be, like, you know, why not build it into the system? And a lot of that stuff's already there from some of the other projects we've done, so.
Like a visitor center?
Well, I mean, like, like a, like a section, because there's so much traffic, there's a lot of space on there that we could put that in and we'll cost us anything because we're doing it anyway. And Pam somehow managed to, you know, I don't know, speak to the internet gods and they, they came back with gifts. So the move to a dot gov after years of various efforts is finally, appears like it's gonna happen. In our previous efforts, like, we bizarrely got like messages back from the organization like just denying every request to get a dot gov and this time for whatever reason Pam uploaded an online tool and it worked. So eventually the site will be under warrant, copa dot com, or dot gov and.
There you go.
Will be official.
Yeah, it went so quickly. Pam apparently filled out a form. They called me and said, you know, are you the chairman of the commissioners?
Yeah, we're.
Verified that you're a county government and that you authorized this, and I was like, uh.
How'd you get this number?
They apparently operated so fast, I mean, like, they got back to us so fast, Pam didn't even have a chance to have a talk to me about it.
I almost fell out of my chair on Friday when I sent the email.
And then like a day later it was approved, it's incredible.
Yeah, so, so that's kind of something fun, I think, you know. The more we dig into this whole platform, the better it looks. It's all going very well.
Well, the security, I bet it's gonna be great too.
Well, the ability to have notifications, give access to nine-one-one, there's, I've seen counties where they're collecting taxes through the website. We're gonna be doing the delinquent stuff, you know, and, but there, it has a really neat payment portal and stuff like that. There's just a ton of stuff that we'll be able to plug into it.
Sounds great, a payment portal.
That'd be really perfect.
All about them.
Well, the hope, the hope is is that we can.
That is true.
I always look at it from a perspective of trying to reduce foot traffic as much as possible because every, every set of feet that blocks and costs us time and energy and the more we get. So the better.
I can imagine, yeah, then. It's very, after, yeah, almost five and a half years in office, some people have started misspelling my name just after starting to spell your name correctly. It was Durban.
Durban, no, you're capitalized.
Yeah, ironically is the original spelling.
Is it? That's funny.
You got a star break there, some headstones.
Okay, capitalized, interesting. So you have zoning ordinance, you got adopting a restoration plan.
There will also be a public hearing.
Oh, I see that.
Election meeting.
And all this family dwelling.
All right, oh, you know, this would be a good chance to talk about this. I was gonna talk about it on Wednesday, but how did I see it? The city sent a request over for a half million, I believe, for the three-point landing boat launch. My response, and I wanted to bring this up in a public meeting, but my response to them was, why don't we talk about match when you guys have, you know, actually allocate money? I understand it's not just the city that benefits from it, so I acknowledge that they could be a role for the county plan, but does that seem fair?
Yeah.
Well, especially since we don't, I think that they were kind of, the way I read it is, is I think that they kind of had this idea that we either had it or that there was some kind of promise or whatever. I mean, we're still parsing out like what can be used for.
For the ARP, yeah, right, for the American Rescue Funds.
Yeah.
We don't know yet.
Yeah.
Exactly. We don't know whether it will all go towards me.
No.
In my opinion, broadband would be a higher priority, for instance.
Yeah.
Anyway, all right, I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't completely off base with my response. Department updates, Lisa, do you have any?
I have a note, a quick tip about our surplus funds.
Oh, yes.
We would like to have them keep it in reserve because if you are aware, we, we don't our funding with them as expected claims. And I'm concerned that we're getting some higher claims, so we'd like to keep that in reserve in case we need it.
Okay. The only concern there would be that there may have been a portion of the budget that is transferred.
Okay.
From quote-unquote savings through a transfer line and back into the general fund.
The other thing that you should be aware of is if we do take it, then we also have to distribute the portion that we paid into it for domestic relations and family services. So we would have to pay them back as well.
Yep.
Or do you want to look at, try and look into that what Ben was referencing, so we'll know?
I'll definitely look at the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's confusing.
I don't, I don't think it is.
Probably is the most confusing line item, that transfer through your budget.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's big and there's a lot of.
Yeah. I just don't want to be cutting the check for that.
Yeah. Well, yeah, right.
No, that, that makes absolute sense. How long have we been with them?
Just the third year.
Okay.
This, this is the third year.
This is the third year. Okay.
Yeah. Really, really bad for us.
Well, the, the whole idea, like of keeping the money is, is that it should technically reduce your stop loss because you're.
Right, right.
That's what takes care of the spikes and claims.
Right, do we have stop loss today?
We still have, there's still like an open aggregate coverage.
Where everybody in the program, though?
Yeah, like overall.
That's what I thought.
And then.
That makes sense.
I, I can't remember if it completely does away with stop loss. I don't think it does, but it dramatically reduces it because our stop loss.
We, we paid a hundred and fifty-four and now it's one like in the four fifty range.
Yeah, yeah.
I know that.
Well, we tapped it several times. That's a year ago.
Well, it's just, I usually go like this and then I go like this.
That's why I was asking about statistics because statistically, you can kind of figure out how often you use your stop loss. And I know when I was at the hospital, Steve and I decided a couple of years ago, bear because we had had a huge stop loss. But, yeah, it's just.
Yeah, I mean.
This helps that, though.
I don't want to say Russian roulette because.
No.
It's not that risky, but.
No.
Oh, it can be, I mean, it, you know, I mean, honestly, the worst is the, the medicines. Like, that's where you see, like, somebody gets prescribed something that's twelve thousand dollars a month or something, or, you know, that kind of stuff. And, and they can go for a year and then your, like, entire system's, you know, it, I don't know. I, I agree with you that it can, you can get into this place where if you're really trying to squeeze every ounce out of it, there's a place for.
A little risk, but, yeah.
Did you want to mention our call with Remedy?
Yeah, I can. Really, last week, we had a call with Remedy regarding, I don't know how to explain it.
Yeah, quote prescription comparisons, so to speak.
Yeah. And they basically go in and negotiate on our behalf if we decide to contract with them. And they are estimating us the savings for our group of about ninety thousand dollars and then the, the RAS home of about fifty thousand. And hey, our, their commission is based on savings, so we ultimately see about, sort of less than seventy thousand.
So that'll be a future, uh, to stay.
Does it include my engagement with them contractually?
Because it'll pay for itself. It's a no-brainer.
Pay for itself.
You just start like keeping a thick lid every time people say that here in these meetings.
It's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer, pay for itself.
Yeah, I talked, I, I asked Carl McKee about the program that.
The pre-trial?
Yeah, the pre-trial program.
What'd he say?
Well, for him, we saved like one point seven million dollars. I was like, that is creative math. It was creative math.
I have no doubt that it is saving the county money.
I was like, okay, how about just, let's just look at variable costs, let's allocate the fixed ones to the days that.
Let's first define recidivism. It's one of the start there and we'll kind of look out for that.
Goodness, this is kind of funny. Well, I just took the jail's budget and I divided it by three sixty-five and applied that tax every day that we keep so much, like, that can't be right.
According to, I figured you don't even need a jail.
Exactly. Yeah, I'm like, we're making money on this stuff. That was funny.
Oh, my, okay.
Thanks.
Schedule wise, I think it's a pretty normal week.
Yeah, I think.
Hope so Friday, I'll be out visiting other counties.
We have a, no, we have a meeting at noon on Wednesday, right?
Yep.
Yeah. A little con, like, oh, no, I wasn't thinking about the ministry thing, sorry, I was thinking, yeah, that's right, that's just Wednesday.
Maybe you and me?
Mm-mm, the one with John Papeland and.
Oh, 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 the, the elevates our profits, that's on Thursday.
Thursday.
Have you considered there?
Yeah, no, I was, I thought it was Wednesday, but it was not Wednesday. Too many of those.
All right, well, thank you. Exhausted our hour, so, thank you very much.